Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 24th, 2021 work session of the Penn Field Planning Board. We'll begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Thanks for tuning in from Penn Field and around the world. This hopefully is our last meeting that we need to do remotely, and next month, we can go back to the good old days. Lori, would you please call the roll? Hetzke here.
Bastian here.
Canower.
Canower here.
Tidings.
Tidings here.
Burton.
Burton here.
Sangster.
Sangster here.
O'Connor.
O'Connor here.
Gray here.
Okay, we have minutes from June 10th. Hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to review them, and maybe we can entertain a motion to approve. Moved by Burton. We got a second?
I'll second.
Second by Canower.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian.
Bastian, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay, just one more thing. This, for those of you watching or participating on Zoom as a work session, it's a work session for the board. It's, everyone is welcome to attend and observe, but it's not necessarily a participatory meeting. So that said, Doug, you want to get started going down our list of tabled items?
First, we're going to start with our action item, if that's alright with you?
It's fine.
So, quick action item. It came in rather late here, back in May of 2020. You guys approved the Stafford Park subdivision off of Jackson Road. It was a 20 lot subdivision. They have come back. They have an interested buyer for lots 14 and 15. The house they would like to build is, would not fit within the setbacks of the one lot. So they're looking to purchase two lots, merge it into one. So that would overall take the 20 lot subdivision down to 19 lots with the merging of lots 14 and 15.
Anybody have an issue? Staff's good? Engineering's good?
No variances with the larger lot? No?
Nope, no. It's, it's just there, the, the two lots there, they really liked both lots. They wanted to do a ranch-style house. That was going to be a little bit more spread out than a two-story. So they're looking to purchase two lots in center the house, sort of where the existing property boundary is between the two.
Okay, somebody want to move it?
I'll move to approve.
You got a second?
I'll second, Tidings.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian.
Bastian, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay, next.
All right, first tabled item, 1030 Plank Road. Since the last time we've met, we've gone through, issued another PRC memo. At this point, staff really has technical concerns with the project we're working through. I know Don is working with the fire marshal on where the pull-offs need to be for fire access and sprinklers. Other than that, it's a bunch of small, little technical things on the plans, signature lines, things like that.
So, all the departments are comfortable moving forward and conditioning approval based on sign-offs?
That's correct.
Okay, we have a resolution here? Whose is this?
Yes, we have a part two, we have a part two and a draft approval resolution ready.
Okay, somebody want to move the part two?
Yeah, Tidings make a motion for the EAF?
Bastian will second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian.
Bastian, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye. Make the motion for the approval of the resolution.
I'll second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian.
Bastian, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right, next item.
Next item, 1357 Jackson Road. Since we last met, we have forwarded on the contact information from the neighbor who called in at the public hearing, 1351 Jackson Road. The applicant and their engineer both have the contact information, and they've both reached out by phone and email. So we're hopeful that they'll be able to figure out, you know, what a good situation is for drainage and buffering to the neighboring property here. We don't know exactly what they're going to propose, but some that staff is comfortable working through in the premature phase.
Everybody good with that course of action?
Yes.
Okay. Somebody want to move it?
I'll move to approve.
We have EAF?
You have the part two EF.
Part two EAF.
Got a second?
I'll second.
All right, good.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian.
Bastian, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
And I'll move to approve the application.
I'll second.
Okay.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian.
Bastian, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Good little yin yang thing working there.
Yeah, we do.
Okay, item three.
1232 Salt Road. Again, this was when staff didn't have any major concerns with it. We did want to leave the comment period open after the public hearing. We've received no additional public comments regarding this application. So we do have a part two EAF and a draft approval resolution, if you're comfortable.
Okay, any other comments from the board? Any outstanding issues that you could see? No. Okay, somebody want to move to approve the EAF?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the EAF.
Tidings, second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian.
Bastian, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
And motion to approve the approval resolution?
Tidings, second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian.
Bastian, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay, item number four.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a great weekend and 4th of July, Independence Day.
And all that. That's right. Thank you very much. Take care.
Thank you as well.
Thank you.
Very important holiday in our country. Just saying.
So, next application, Penn Field Heights, 1810, 1820 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. The board had tabled this at the last meeting. Since that meeting, staff had sent out, prior to the public hearing, a PRC memo detailing staff's concerns. It was a rather lengthy memo, and we have received responses from the applicant, responses to our comments, but have not seen revised plans at this time. I know they are working on it, and they're hoping to submit those soon.
Okay, so, yeah, we're obviously going to be tabling this tonight, but if we could begin to go over some of the initial comments, concerns, I think it might be helpful, you know, spend a few minutes just doing that. Is everybody good with that?
Sure.
Did all of you get Jim's memo about this, his thoughts on this? I'd kind of like to go through these items one by one, if we could, and really get everybody's feelings or opinions on, on the various points that he brought up. The first one with regarding public spaces, public open space shall be available to all dwellings within mixed-use developments. And the comment is that the common building, pool, outdoor kitchen, et cetera, appear to be to available residents only if they pay a fee. We should consider whether this programming option meets the intent of the MUD manual. I, I, I don't know if the manual specifically prohibits private recreation or, you know, let's call it club-type uses. However, does the application, if, if this is the case, what other parts of the application meet the district's requirements?
Yeah, so it's, you know, in many ways, this boils down to the wording. So, we're talking about public open space. So the question, I guess, is whether or not this area that I'm referring to-
Would be considered public open space?
Or, or whether, you know, we're, we're still in kind of in our infancy in mixed-use development. So, you know, was it, was it the intent to have these kinds of common areas that would be or could be shared by the residents in the community? This is, they're putting quite a bit of focus and money into this corner of the development with the swimming pool and the weight room and the outdoor kitchen, and there's, you know, there's a lot of, there's a, there's a banquet space, and there's a lot of things going on. And if that's not available to the residents of the community, you know, how does everybody feel about that? Is that something that, you know, we should ask the applicant to elaborate on, or are we okay with that?
Yeah, I, from my standpoint, it would not be considered public open space, if that's the case. You know, it would be potentially private use space, but not, I don't, I don't believe that we could consider if, it's only available to residents and only if they pay a fee to participate. It's not, it's not like a public park, something like that. So, I'm like everybody else's views on that as well.
So the, so the wording is that only residents there can use this space?
I think so far.
It's that restrictive?
Well, I think maybe it's-
I think we probably should have them clarify.
The applicant shared with us that they intend to have this space available to the public at large and to commercial users and to the residents if they pay a fee. I don't know if that's a monthly fee or an annual fee or a usage fee if they want to use the facility. Not, not really sure, but that's, that's what they shared with us and-
So how is that different than Harris Hill Park?
Any of the parks around? Harris Hill Park isn't regulated by the mixed-use development.
Well, I know that, but I'm saying residents have to pay a fee to use it. It's open to the public.
Well, they have to pay a fee to use the, the entire building.
If you want to rent the pavilion, you pay a fee.
Right, right.
But that's open to any town resident.
Right.
If this clubhouse is open to any town resident, if the pool's open to any town resident, that potentially could be-
Public open space.
Yeah.
So we need clarification from the applicant?
Yes, yes, I would say so.
I didn't interpret it as that, but certainly wouldn't hurt to have them state that. And, I mean, if we think that's going to be a problem, definitely. I didn't think that it's going to be open to the public, though, you know. Residents and then, you know, guests of theirs or whatever through, be it a rental fee or inch away, whatever they got going on.
Right.
But, I mean, like most places, but, you know, I'm not opposed to ask them, you know, let them address the issue for us.
It was a comment that was brought up by town staff as part of the PRC comments, and I've been trying to look through the responses here really quickly to see if I could find their response. But I, I believe their response was, that it was something that they were going to further delineate in future submissions when we get revised plans.
Okay.
Okay, so, so having the, the board then, in our tabling resolution, ask for additional clarification from them would be consistent with staff comments?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, because, you know, a membership club like a country club or a swim club or any other type of club isn't really considered open space.
I think they referenced the YMCA a similar model or style to like the YMCA.
Yeah.
Which is, which is a, a membership organization.
I didn't, I didn't pull this language into the memo, but if you go back through the mixed-use development in the first two major chapters where the concept of mixed-use developments really kind of lays out this, this community space with common areas that are used by, you know, all the people that work and live in that development. So, you know, I just, I think there's maybe a little disconnect with this provision in the manual from really kind of how we got there. So that's, that's kind of the clarification, I guess, that we're looking for. And, and, you know, again, when I'm, when I'm, I'm doing these reviews and thinking about the next mixed-use development that comes up, and, you know, if, if there's clarification or, or, you know, if we set some kind of a precedent, you know, maybe we want to think about how that might impact the next applicant.
Right. Well, absolutely. I mean, this is number two, and each time we go through this, we're, hopefully, we're getting better at it.
A little better.
I was number one. I mean, that public space of the first one we did now sounds similar, because they said that was public play, right, for the-
Yeah, the lawn area.
And stuff like that, because they wanted them to make it with the regular public, so I mean, is that-
Well, they've got that Main Street concept, and it's kind, they got a lot more room to, to move over there, too. But, yeah.
Right. Okay, we covered this item sufficiently? Can we move on? Okay, outdoor seating areas shall have at least five feet of unobstructed pedestrian space. It's a comment that they should reply to. Some of the interior sidewalks designed at four and a half feet. Manual suggests a minimum of five feet.
Yeah, I mean-
What's the argument for five feet versus four and a half feet? Is there, is it splitting hairs, or is there a legit reason?
Yeah, ideally, we'd like to see it wider than five feet, because it opens it up to a little easier multimodal transportation. If you have somebody on a bike, they're not going to be-
Well, the primary sidewalks are wider.
Yeah.
They're seven feet or eight feet, depending on where they are. But the, to answer your question, the national model codes, going back to the 40s and 50s, established a unit of width for a pedestrian at 22 inches.
Okay, the average person, 22 inches wide.
So, now you take two people walking in opposing directions, swinging their arms.
Yep.
And, you know, you, you create this, this kind of a need for a space, and there's a comfort level with-
Right.
You know, so, yeah, there, there is a difference, and, and it, it appears that the rest of the sidewalks in the development meet the, the other criteria for seven feet or eight feet. It's just these, these arteries that are jutting in between the buildings that don't appear to be wide enough. And it looked like a typical note, so I just thought we should ask them to take a look at that.
Sure, right. Any other comments on that?
No, that seems, yeah, reasonable.
Reasonable.
Okay, design a mixed-use development that encourages mass use of, I'm sorry, use of mass transit along Route 250 and developments. This is a tough call, because I don't know if there are any bus lines that go up and down 250.
There are not.
No.
No.
It's possible that-
Closest is 441 and 250.
Once there's a critical mass in this whole area, there may be justification for that. But I don't know. I think the point is a good point. I'm just wondering, how do we and what can we reasonably expect from an applicant on this?
So, my thought on this was similar to the town's sidewalk policy. So, a lot of people come to us, and they argue that there's no sidewalks on either side. But if we, if we didn't compel applicants to install sidewalks, we would never have the connectivity of sidewalks that we have today. And, and I don't know, I mean, you're a professional planner. I, I don't know how this works with public transportation. If there were enough mixed-use developments in the 250 corridor, you know, could we reach out to RGRTA and ask them to start running some more lines and-
It would, yeah, it would have to be an ongoing conversation with RGRTA. And we do, we do have discussions with them, not on a, on a super regular basis, but on a, on a regular enough basis to, you know, anticipate the needs of, of the community. So right now, there's really only two lines that service into Penn Field, one up Empire Boulevard, and then on Penn Field Road, that comes up to the Target, or Target and Wegmans on 250 and 441.
You know, I kind of like your-
But it could be something where, like, in, when we do developments, so a lot of times, like you're saying with the sidewalks, you know, even if they're not installed, we still take an easement so that if we do need to come back in the future, or we look to come back in the future, and the town wants to do sidewalks, we have the capacity through some form of, in this case, usually easement, so that we have the right to go in and put in a sidewalk. It could be something where even if they don't do a bus stop now, they allocate enough space or an area that could support one in the future-
Exactly.
So that if or when, you know, a bus line or other, you know, multimodal transportation-
Or there's, or there's some sort of fee that goes into a pool that's set aside for that future event.
Well, in this case, you know, because we're on Route 250, if we're going to create a, a turnoff or, you know, a, a bus canopy or, you know, one of those things, you'd have to get DOT involved, right? So they, they would have to approve that. There would have to be, you know, some kind of a, an easement or extension right of way or something. You know, I'm not, I'm not sure how that would work. But it seems to me that we could sit here in the not-too-distant future and find ourselves with five or six developments in the 250 corridor. And, and maybe all the people then, working and living in this area, would sure love to have public transportation.
Well, in addition to that, even within the district, there may be a need down the road. And while it's somewhat impossible to determine exactly how that would manifest itself today, we may want to try to plan for that eventuality.
So maybe we could ask the applicant to tell us how that could be accommodated for, you know, future public transportation needs.
Right, whether it's, you know, we don't even know. I mean, think about 10 years ago, did anybody think people would be cruising around cities on scooters? And they'd be leaving scooters all over sidewalks and, and things like that?
Not too many years ago did we think we'd have the kind of activity that we have at the YMCA that we do.
Right.
True, so.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's very important, and with the reduction in fossil fuel and, you know, it could be something good. So, I mean, it's, it's obvious that the site can't accommodate it internal. But maybe there's something that could be done within the public right of way.
Right, if they're going to be the beneficiaries of something down the road, should everyone in the district contribute? Okay, any other comments on that right now, or can we move on? All right. Height of the buildings. Originally proposed at 70 feet on the, was it the east side of Building D?
Building D, yep.
It's, you know, outside the permitted height. I think that there's probably differing opinions on how, how big of a problem that is. So, I'll let you go first, Jim.
Yeah, I guess, a couple of comments. The first one is, we, when we asked the applicant, they didn't appear to have considered an alternate design that either complied or deviated from the maximum height just a little bit. You know, right now, we're 15 feet plus over the height. And yes, it's a small portion of the roofline in the development, but the highest rooflines in any development stick out. That's what you see when you drive down the road. So, you know, it's another one of those things where I'm not entirely opposed to the, the architectural design and, and how they've provided symmetry with those two buildings that rise up a little higher at the peak. But do we want to establish this precedent for future mixed-use developments? Do we, do we want to say 10% is appropriate, or, you know, 20% is appropriate? Or, you know, if the next applicant wants to go 85 feet high, you know, how does the board feel about that?
Right, where does it stop and how's it?
Yeah, so that's kind of what I wanted to ask of you guys.
Okay. Rest of you thoughts? Bob?
I know on the last elevations, like they typically do, they showed first and second floor elevations. I'd kind of like to see peak elevations for the buildings. And then, also then, if we know the elevation, which we can easily get, of the crest of 250, we would know then, at that datum, what the actual height was from the roadway.
Sure.
So I think from a visual point of view, that that may help.
Okay.
Because it drops off to the east.
Right. So we may-
They did, by the way, give us those elevations with the-
Different perspectives and points of view.
Something we've done in previous applications, especially for taller buildings and cell towers, has been doing balloon flies and photographing a balloon fly. That could be something that the board considers having them do, just to show perspective from, you know, 250, what 70 feet up would look like.
We could do that. That's not a bad idea. What are your thoughts on this?
I agree with Jim. I, I, I mean, we definitely should do something. I don't, you know, I mean, I'm not opposed to keeping them right, whatever legally it is. I mean, like you say, Jim said, are you going to keep letting them go up and up so we get 10, 20% more? I'm not opposed to just keep them restricted to whatever presently is approved.
Well, I, I think Bob has a point, though, because this, this site does drop drastically from west to east. So, it's, it's possible that if we ask them to give us a section from the crown of the road to the height at the peak, and, and then see what the delta is there, maybe it will lessen the amount of additional height than maybe the appearance, instead of being 15 feet over town spec.
It's actually lower.
10.
Yeah. And that-
And maybe 10 is okay for you guys. I'm, I'm not suggesting a number. I just thought we should bring it up, because when I asked the applicant during their first presentation about that, they, they said that they would come back, and, and I, I don't recall their last presentation telling us or showing us how they possibly considered some alternatives.
Right. Right. Bill?
What, what drives the maximum height requirement? Is it fire apparatus? Is it aesthetics?
Uh, it was...
Is it an arbitrary number?
It was a somewhat arbitrary number from the mixed-use committee. Uh, people just saying, hey, we don't want anything more than four stories.
Yeah, I think it was as an aesthetic choice.
Twenty-five, twenty-five people or so on the mixed-use committee and everybody has their own opinion of what's acceptable and what's not acceptable. And that was the, that was the number that was arrived at.
So, there's no science behind it or anything like that?
Nope.
There's no fire apparatus, max, maximum reach for rescue?
Well...
Not that I'm...
The committee did look at current zoning in other zoning districts and they studied, um, zoning districts in other parts of the country with mixed-use developments and took a look at that for what's appropriate for, for certain heights. So, there was some, some logic to, uh, it wasn't completely arbitrary.
I think we have to take that into consideration.
I just, for the record, I'm, I'm not entirely opposed to, to what they did. I'm just, I'm comparing what's being proposed to the board against what's in the mixed-use manual.
Right, right.
So, and they determine the height from grade level where the building is, not from the crown of the road. Drops down.
Yes.
And so, it may be, what, what is that, a tent for drop?
I, I, I don't know, but Bob had a good point. It'd be nice to see that section. It, it'd be very easy for Peter to do that.
Yeah, balloons?
Well, I don't even think the balloon is necessary. I think just looking at that section at, to scale so that you can see the crown of the road, the height of the peak, the distance back, and just kind of draw a conclusion as to what the impact is.
And I think a lot of that, that height, too, is the architecture and the pitch of that roof.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Because that roof, I don't know, looks like it's maybe close to a twelve-twelve pitch. So, it's a pretty high roof because of just the architecture.
Okay.
Okay. Density. Mixed-use manual is twenty units an acre in the A zone. And this is, uh, which would allow, on the site of just under five acres, it'd allow five, or ninety-nine units, and they're coming in for a hundred and thirty-two. So, that to me is, uh, to me, anyway, that's a much bigger, it's a much more significant issue than some of the other, some of the other things.
So, the property is a little bit larger than that four point nine five because they are looking to utilize approximately, uh, one acre of eighteen twenty, uh, or eighteen-ten Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. So, I think their, the acreage of the parcel they're intending is like six point...
Is it six point six acres, missing change?
I'm not sure if it's that large. I think it's more like six point one acres in total.
So, the, so the point really is, is this. Density is perhaps the most coveted thing any community has, particularly in a mixed-use development. And if, if we were to allow this applicant to exceed the density set forth in the manual, what happens to all the other mixed-use developments that come to us? You know, again, are we setting a precedent? And, and if, and if we are and everybody's okay with that, that's, that's fine. But, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna hold the applicants to what's in the code, and then, then it's easy to, to treat every other application before us. Twenty-hus an acre, boom.
Right.
So, you said that was six point one?
Six point six, so they're right at, so based on, based on, right at the acreages they're looking at, they're at six point six-three-two. Twenty units is a hundred and thirty-two units, so they're right at...
Right on the code.
They're, they're pushing the edge.
They're, they're at the maximum density?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's with combining two parcels?
That's with combining the two parcels, because they're looking at one point six-eight acres on, um... So, essentially, uh, you know, most of building E and the, the, um, common house are gonna be on what is currently sixteen-ten, or eighteen-ten Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. So, they're looking to pick up about one point six-eight acres, you know, of the property back here. So, it essentially follows this line back here.
Okay.
But at the acreage of the two parcels together, they're, one thirty-two is twenty units.
So, it's within?
It's right on the edge.
It's right on the edge.
Right on the edge. If you're going three digits in on the, the acreage size, they're at one thirty-two point six units. At twenty units per acre.
Right. Okay. Well, that's actually, uh, makes me feel better.
That would have been a big lift.
Yeah.
For them.
For sure. For sure. Okay, uh, visibility of parking areas from the view of the public. And they have the one lot that is along two fifty on the south side of the proposed development. Is that something that, um... Big concerns about, is it, uh... What should we, what should we ask or suggest?
Well, so, so far, um, we've held the other two applications to this standard. And, and, and this, to me, is not difficult. I mean, it would be relatively easy to reconfigure that retail building and provide some mature buffering so that we don't have a parking lot out by the road. And, and again, this is something that was brought up during their first presentation that continued in their second presentation without an alternative to meet the code. And I think, knowing what took place during the, uh, mixed-use development committee hearings and all of those mixed-use developments that were studied in other parts of the country, you do not see any parking from the public road, period. And it's something that the committee wanted and something that the town wanted. I, I don't, I don't think this is something that we, that we overlook. But you guys, whatever you guys think.
So, on the west side with Penfield Square, there's the parking that wraps around the, uh, the large building on the east side. And you can see parking from, they did build a berm to help shield it. And I think there's trees planted there to ultimately...
Yeah. If you remember during that process, there was a chunk of parking that was immediately right of the main street in the town square that ended up getting relocated to the back because we brought that up. And we also told, uh, Peter Vars on that other application, the same thing, four weeks ago. But I just think, you know, more than anything, we're, we're, we're trying to understand this, this manual and these complex applications and, and, you know, what we can do to try to follow that along for the best community for the future.
Right.
And, you know, having, having pavement visible, you know, I think we wanna minimize that.
I would agree.
I'm in agreement with that.
Yeah, I, if that building, like Jim says, is reconfigured, the dimension, so it's facing two fifty, then the parking can be more behind it.
Sure.
Yeah. With that said, right across the street, you'd have that expansive parking lot from the YMCA. Well, I know that predated mixed-use development.
Right.
I think we still have to hold to our ground on this.
What's that?
It's not in a mixed-use development zone.
Right.
Uh, the YMCA is in the mixed-use development zone. But it predates it by about...
Ten years.
Ten or fifteen. I think it's two thousand and five. So, it get date, uh, predates it by about twelve years.
So, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with Jim on this. We need to alter guns.
I don't think it would be a huge burden to modify that.
Okay. Uh, right, so... Shared parking for residential units must be located with a maximum three hundred feet of dwelling unit entrances. So, I, do we have in the plan parking lot spaces that are further than three hundred feet away?
The area that staff had the most concern is there's a lot here on the north side between one of the gathering areas in the common house. There isn't an entrance to building D on the north side, except for if you're on the first floor, there's, you can jump your balcony to get into your unit. But there's no, there's no first floor, uh, or there's no entrances to building D on the north side of the building where this parking area is located. They, we asked about this area and, uh, one of staff's comments was, you know, possibly doing parallel parking in front of the common house and up by the gathering area and reducing this parking area just because we did not see it as a, as a heavily utilized parking area just because it is so far from an entrance to building D. They indicated they would likely be using it as, um, employee parking, as well as, uh, some additional parking for the common house. But it, it's what we would consider the, probably the furthest away from any usable entrance, especially to any of the, the major buildings.
On that, on that particular lot, are there handicap spots?
Uh, there are none.
Okay, so all the handicap spots are in closer proximity to...
Yes.
Building entrances?
Yep, so there's, there's two by the retail building. There's, uh, one or two over here by the entrances to building C and D. From what I understand, they may be modifying one of the parallel spots here to be an accessible spot. And then there are several by other building entrances.
So, something that I failed to note here, but technically where you have multiple surface parking lots in a, in a complex or a development like this, accessible parking spaces have to be dispersed in every parking area. Can't all just be located in one location. If you want the, if you want the citation, I can send it to you tomorrow.
Okay. So, what you're saying is that northern, the north lot needs to have accessible...
Has to have accessible parking, yep. So, in that case, they, they would need one. But, you know, Bob's right. Other, all other things being equal, accessible parking spaces have to be located immediately adjacent to the accessible entrances to buildings. But aside from that is this other, um, state law that says you can't, can't build five parking lots and just put all the handicap spaces in one. Every single separate lot has to have.
Is that practiced?
Oh, yeah.
I think where I am and where I work, all the accessible parking spots are next to the building and we have probably twenty acres of parking.
Sorry about that.
But I mean, what makes sense? That's all I'm just saying. I don't see it where I work. And it's fairly new and maybe striped and they...
Okay. So, obviously, that's something that needs to be addressed. Uh, that which leads into number nine, community spaces that do not appear to be handicap accessible.
And Doug had this, uh, in the last letter to them. I just, I, I listed some specific areas. The, the one that stuck out to me the most was that elevated sitting area where they have the windmill. They can't, can't have an elevated, um, gathering space that's not handicap accessible. And I, I believe he said it was elevated five feet.
Well, but I think the elevation was on the, uh, east side of the, it was supposed to be at grade with the sidewalk.
On the west side?
On the west side. That's my understanding, I don't know.
That's, that's a, that's a big slope.
Well, if it's flat, then, you know...
Yeah. So, I'm suggesting that they show us, I, I, you know...
Well, I agree.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to nitpick their design. I just, they have an obligation and I think they should show us how they meet that in all of these areas so we don't go, oops.
Right.
Right. I believe they indicated in their responses that that was something that they were gonna take a look at and modify to ensure that it was ADA compliant.
Yeah, I, I saw that.
All right, and then the last one on your memo, the roadways don't comply with Appendix D of the fire code? So...
Yeah, and I think, uh, Jeff already brought that up, right? But in their last presentation two weeks ago, the, uh, uh, one of the presenters from, uh, SWBR was questioning whether or not they could meet with the fire marshal and, you know, kind of wiggle out of that, and they can't. So...
I do know the applicant has been in discussions with, uh, the fire marshal regarding, um, the regulate, fire regulations that they would have to comply with. Based on the responses provided, um, it appears that they may be looking to do, to try to balance out, um, either having twenty-six foot wide, um, you know, accessible driveways that, uh, meet fire apparatus requirements. They did indicate that they're gonna have Alex, uh, from Costich, uh, do a turning template. The fire marshal has, um, specifications and we usually require whenever they do a turning template to use the largest vehicle in any of the, um, our fire districts in Penfield, the largest vehicle that they have to ensure that the turning table, turning template meets, um, our longest truck.
Yeah, so, for the record, um, when buildings are over thirty feet, you need aerial apparatus access. So, it's not a twenty-six-foot pavement. It's forty-one feet in total. You gotta be a minimum of fifteen feet off the building so the, so the responders aren't asked to park a fire apparatus close to a burning building. And then it extends out twenty-six feet from there. So, it's a forty-one-foot, um, dimensional obligation so that they can swing their ladder and get on the top of a building. It's, uh, it, it's challenging on, on tight sites like this. But, um, you know, it's more than just the, the twenty-six feet.
There's gotta be hundreds, if not thousands, of places in the state that don't meet that criteria.
Yeah, you know, you, you say that, it's, but if you go into any urban area and the firefighters will tell you, you give us a fire, we'll figure out a way to put it out. We'll figure out a way to get there and get water out of it.
Yeah.
But, um, it, it certainly makes a lot of sense in brand-new developments when compliance is achievable to...
Why not be compliant?
You know?
Okay. That also should go in the tabling resolution. Okay. Everybody also has a checklist here that, um, I don't know if we...
I don't think we're ready for this, EG.
I pretty much tend to agree with you there.
Yeah, I, I, it's, it's clear to me that there will be some revisions to this plan and, and admittedly from them, they're still working some things out. and admittedly from them, they're still working some things out, and, and so there's going to be another iteration or two before we can really go through the factors for consideration.
Yeah. We concur with that?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. So, we have a, I think, a very good start on this. Are there any other items that, or points that staff wants us to put in the existing tabling resolution?
No, I think what you guys started with is some pretty, some pretty good comments. We'll be sure to get all those in the tabling resolution. At this point, you know, we're waiting for the revised plans based on the last PRC memo and the comments the board had at the public hearing on June tenth. So, I think we'll have more to go on when we see the next revision of plans. You guys have an opportunity to review those.
Right, and we got a rev, uh, some answers to comments yesterday.
Yes, we got them about three o'clock yesterday.
And, so, you know, if we take a look at some of those that came in and start to, start to prepare this checklist, along with.
Might, might provide some clarity to some of the things we kept around here tonight.
Right. Right. Okay. Somebody want to move to table this?
So moved. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second?
Hutskee?
Hutskee, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tiding?
Tiding, aye.
All right. What else we got?
That's all I have for you guys tonight.
Anybody else have any new business or old business or funny business?
No.
Okay.
Well, I, I will say that I look very forward to going back to our conference space and.
I would agree.
Collaborating in earnest.
Yes, I totally agree. So hopefully, this is our last meeting work session up on the dais, and we'll be convening back at our old digs at the conference table in the back of the auditorium next meeting. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in, and have a great Fourth of July holiday. And we will adjourn the meeting. Thanks for, thank you, everyone, for coming.